13th of November, and we'll begin our work session now. Ms. Lemon, will you call the roll force, please?
Director Badley.
Present.
Director Campos Spitzey.
Present.
Director Mash.
Present.
Director Matthews.
Present.
Director Norwood. Director Pappas.
Present.
Director Sullivan.
Present.
Six board members, present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. First on our agenda tonight is our calendar review and community engagement. So everybody take a look at the calendar. So we have a... We don't have anything on our calendar until the next board meeting. And then we will do a ribbon cutting, perhaps our last ribbon cutting, Keith Middle School. And then special board meeting. That is for the purpose of swearing in our new board members. So that's on the 30th. But we could need everybody there. I did send, or I think I've talked to everybody about that, or texted everybody about that. But it just depends on when they certify the election. If they certify the election on the 22nd, we've got 15 days to elect officers from the point they certify the election. If they certify on the 22nd, we will be outside that 15-day window, our next board meeting. So we will need to elect officers potentially on that date. But hopefully, we will do that at our December 11th board meeting, regular board meeting. Any...anything on there that you guys know needs to be there and is not?
Matthews, if I may, just a couple of reminders. We have, we do have the work session down at Casby that we will hold. And President Matthews and I worked with Brad Miles to do some planning for that. And then we'll have a meeting coming up with Melissa Barber and Nate Fall to work on some legal work that we will also do at Casby with them as a part of that session. And then we have, we've tentatively scheduled another board work session for Wednesday, January 10th at 8:00 a.m. We plan to go 8 to noon that day, or thereabouts, for another work session, which will also, you know, just involve onboarding of the new board members with the, or new board member with, and really, Dr. Campos Spitzey hasn't really gotten to be a part of one of these fully since we appointed her. And so that'll be, both of those sessions will be really important for integrating the new board members with the existing board members, and then also just a lot of reminders and some new information around, from the legal advice piece of this. And then I think, Ms. Lemon, did you have forms for Mrs. Sullivan and Mr. Norwood for Casby? We still do not have your information regarding the Colorado School Boards Association Conference and your intent to participate or not, and when. And so if you can get those forms to them this evening, let's just have you do it on paper, since it hasn't worked, obviously, to get it from you electronically. So we'll get those taken care of, so that if we need to change rooms, or cancel rooms, or make different arrangements, we can do that. It will be here before we know it, right, with the Thanksgiving break coming up next week? Was there anything else, Ms. Lemon, that you and I spoke about today related to those pieces?
I think that's it. If your shirt size has changed since I gathered those last webinar.
Yeah, we do want, we do plan to purchase some clothing for you all to have at Casby, so you can wear the brand of District 6 as you see other school board members do down there. So if you're letting me know on shirt size.
And do just note that that December 6th work session starts at 8:00 a.m. So that's different than what we've done in the past. A lot of times, we would start that at 1:00 o'clock, or something like that, where we'd drive down in the morning. If you want to drive down in the morning on the 6th, you will need to get up pretty early to get there. So there is a possibility of getting a hotel room on Tuesday night.
President Matthews, board members, if you can let me know if you plan on driving down, we can get you reimbursement before the conference, and then we can also get you per diem for those meals that we are not covering.
I think Amy's, you're going to send an email as a reminder around some of that also. Yeah, so watch your emails, there'll be some updates coming, and as we get closer to all of that, we'll make sure you have the information you need to know where you're going and what the expectations are.
All right. Anything else, okay, some calendar? It's interesting, there are a lot of, yeah, there are less school visits.
I should, well, I should add one more thing. We had not set the schedule for school visits for second semester. Amy and I worked on those a little bit today. You should be getting those in the next few days to get school visits on the calendar coming up, starting in January.
Just a reminder, we are closing in.
Yes, we are. It goes really quickly now. It goes really quickly now.
It'll be at Christmas before we know it. All right. Moving right along, we have an energy use update. I'll let you introduce this.
Thank you, President Matthews. So I had asked Kent and team to put together some information regarding our energy usage. Over the months, we've had, last six or eight months, we've had some questions about energy use, about solar. So what I've asked the team to put together tonight is just some high-level information around the improvements we have made in energy usage and energy conservation, and then, actually, some of the numbers around our energy use. And then they will be available also to ask questions here tonight.
Okay, thank you for that.
Will you introduce yourself, Mr. Henson, and Mandy as well, please?
Okay. Kent Henson, this is the Superintendent of Support Services, and this is Mandy Larson. She's our Director of Facilities. She's been with us for about a year. She is a mechanical engineer by trade, and has come to us with a lot of experience in project management and construction management. So energy use is kind of right up her alley, shall I say?
Yes.
Okay. So just an update, and, you know, going back to when the, you know, with our deferred maintenance needs in the district, and going back to when the MLO passed, since 2017, we have been working on upgrading a lot of equipment, which we've talked about before, in roofs in our district that were behind, were maybe 10, 10 years behind replacement. And so you've seen a lot of the things that we have been doing in terms of increasing energy replacement, roof replacements, which we'll talk about in a little bit, boiler replacements for sure, chiller and cooling tower replacements, building automated systems. We now have, pretty close to having the ability to monitor the temperature in all of the rooms within our district, except maybe this building.
Yeah, not this.
Not this building, for those of you, but with our classrooms, so we get alerts when things are too hot or too cold and whatever. So there's quite a bit of technology in place with that. Just in terms of replacing buildings, we have gained efficiency. Tearing down the Greeley West High School, replacing it with a new one was an energy save, just by doing that. Eliminating portable classrooms, those are horribly efficient when it comes to using electricity or gas. And then in the process, developing new technical standards for lighting and other components in our new buildings. And so this is the, you don't have to read the spreadsheet, just look at the colors, but these were just some columns of things that, when the MLO started, that were beyond their useful life expectancy. So boilers, 10 years past, roofs, 10, 15 years past. Things were patched, patched, a lot of duct tape, you know, and stuff, so to speak, holding things together. So where you see red on there, it was past its life expectancy. Where you saw, see green, that's less than five years old. So when this was made, that's Prairie Heights. That was the newest building before we'd really done anything. This is fairly updated here, the same spreadsheet. So again, using MLO and bond. Again, I know it's hard to read, but if you look at the color, green means that it's less than five years old and has been replaced. So these are things like roofs, building automated systems, boilers, chillers, paint, exterior paint, you see a lot of red, hasn't been a priority for us.
The one right in the middle.
Yeah. Keeping our buildings dry and working on the HVA systems on the inside's been a priority. And then even when you go over to the right, you'll see some shaded, shade, or different shades of green, that's when we get into our LED lighting. So wherever we have done a new building, we've used LED lights. If we have done new classroom, like remodeled a library for a Smart Lab, we've put in LED lighting. We've put in a new wing on a building, it's been LED lighting. So those different shades were my attempts to kind of show, well, that building has some LED lighting, but we're not done. So the darker the color, the more done it is. In the facility master plan that was approved before, and set the tone for the last bond issue, that was approved by the board, in it are recommendations for our next bond, which included LED light upgrades through the district. So we couldn't do everything with this bond or with the MLO, so that shows that we have still some work. We've made some way in terms of LED lighting, but we're not totally complete. The other thing, you'll see kind of a column over there, it's got a lot of white in it, is window replacement. That is also set to be a priority in our next bond issue. We have wooden windows in a lot of our schools that are residential windows. Typically, schools have more industrial-type windows in them. I don't know why, they're there, they're old, and some of them are coming up to be 30 years old, and we're not able to find parts. And if you think of the windows in your house as they age, they age, and they're horribly inefficient when it comes to conserving energy. So those are some of the things that we have to do yet. Some of the horizontal bands of red will be gone this summer as we finish our last schools for the bond, most of them, except for exterior paint. So those are the schools that we'll be hitting this summer.
Ms. Henson, that center column that was red, which one was that one?
Exterior paint.
What's RTU for?
Rooftop units, you see a lot of NAs there. A lot of our buildings don't have rooftop units on top that need to be replaced. Those that do have them are getting old. We're replacing some this next summer at Shawshine, and then down the road, probably have to do some, or I'm sorry, Meeker. So it's just a system that we don't have a lot of in the district, but you'll see up there at Meeker, there's how many rooftop units up there?
26.
26, and they all need to be replaced, and their cost is about each?
30, 45 grand.
So it's kind of a, it's kind of a big test to do that, so.
Okay.
Yep. So roof replacements, we've done 23 full roof replacements since 2017, which was the first column over there on that last chart, which was green. Three partial roof replacements. How you get to get a partial roof replacement is we have a lot of buildings that have multiple roofs, because they have multiple additions. So Greeley Central, I don't know how many roofs are on that, I couldn't, there might be nine different sections that have roofs. Some of those were replaced, you know, 10 years ago, or five or some, so we kind of got into some partial roof replacements. As we've replaced the roof, obviously, we're using better and thicker insulation than was in the past. And as we tear off roofs, we replace the insulation off, which often has been water damaged, which then does not have a good R-value for energy. And then eliminated, usually when the roof comes off, you have to eliminate curves and openings, access doors, that usually all comes off when we go on new and reseal everything and put on a new roof. So, you know, that's kind of good. This helps us conserve energy in buildings. There's an example, the old versus the new. So you can see, when you go into a roof on the left, which ours were so old, when it got time to replace, you can see the insulation is actually deteriorating on them as compared to what we put on there on the right. So hopefully, next time, this roof will be replaced within the time that it should be, and not 10 to 15 years later. In terms of HVAC upgrades, you know, we showed on the chart that we've placed boilers in 21 schools. Schools have different numbers of boilers in them. I know Greeley Central has three, Greeley West has four or five. Can't quite remember, depending on the size of the building, they have different boilers. We have been consistent with the use of lock-and-bar as our boiler, as a high-efficiency boiler, because for our department, we have one brand to maintain. That's a lot easier, and allows us to maintain it much easier. Plus, we know it, and it works with our BAS systems and everything with controls pretty well. Our new boilers are a minimum of 96% efficiency. In this whole turn-down thing at the bottom, if you think of the older boilers, you had to run them, even if you only needed a small amount of energy, you had to run them at least 50 to 60% capacity just to get a little bit out. So picture your gas stove at home, having a high and a medium, but no low or simmer. In these boilers, we could actually get them to run at only 4% of their total capacity. So at times where maybe we need a boiler, but not all of the second one, we can run that really, really low, which is much more efficient. You know, if all you had, picture your gas stove, if you had to run both, two burners at high, but you didn't really need it, that's a lot, a lot of waste of energy. So we've been pretty happy with those. And here's a picture on the left, Philip Valdez, our Mechanical Maintenance Manager, standing. These are two boilers at Central. Those are probably 20-foot long, at least, you're seeing the end. They're 20-foot long, and we replaced those two boilers with these three. So a footprint that is less than one of them, and it's, they're much more efficient.
So tell us, like, can, in this room, how much space are we talking about for the old boilers and then the new boilers?
I would say probably 2/3 of the room. Like, if you kind of came to here, to that wall, and then about from here to that wall. And then now, those boilers there are, you know, this wide.
Why do we care about the size of the boiler?
It's just different. It's where the technology, it's where the technology has come.
Yeah.
And they're so much more efficient at burning gas, they're just that much smaller.
Thanks.
I think it's kind of cool.
So are they set on like an autopilot, or is somebody regulating them daily?
There's a sequence of control that we set up, and then we program that in so that, you know, unless there's something going on, it should just work off of the schedule and off of the outside air temperature, humidity, and kind of all of that. But we do have the ability to go in and override or increase temperatures, you know, if we need to. But ideally, we just kind of set it.
Yeah, so that, you know, every building set, like, two hours before school starts, they come out? Yeah, so that, you know, every building set, like, two hours before school starts, they come on. And then when school gets out, they'll shut down a little bit. But then with all these activities, that's where we use building use forms. Oh, there's a basketball game tonight. So this end of the building needs heat, but this end doesn't. So we can control and manipulate all that to, to make it more efficient, so.
A lot of our team is sleeping better at night, not having to wake up and check temperatures.
So a year from now, we can probably compare the, like, the utility bills and see a significant difference then?
Just, how about you wait a couple of seconds?
Okay, you're ahead of me.
We've started talking about that. So new chillers and cooling towers, so the same thing we were talking about. You know, like air conditioning, we have been, like, at Northridge, we replaced a water cooled tower with a air cooled chiller. And when we use air instead of water, there's a lot less chemicals that we have to put in. The water that's going through the pipes and such, so it's, it's cost preventative, or cost, saves, saves us some money on pipe and wear and tear on our pipe systems.
And like this time of year is a great example. We have to drain cooling towers so that they don't freeze. But once you drain the cooling tower, the air conditioning for the building is done. So we drained our cooling towers two, three weeks ago. Well, last week, it's up in the seventies and there's schools that are calling and saying, we need air conditioning to rule it. You have to wait till next year. And with an air cooled chiller, you don't have to do that, you can run it anytime, so that's another benefit.
Those people at work in this building have never heard that speech. And there's this example, well, cooling towers get rusty and junky, and so we're, we're replacing those also. BAS controls, we talked about a little bit. So just, this is kind of what you asked, is, you know, we have things on schedule, so we have things automated. In the classroom, the teacher will have a four degree range, at which we have a district standard of a temperature. And they'll have a four degree plus two to minus two range at which they can set it in their classroom. You know, in the old days, when I was young, we used to, you know, if the temperature wasn't right in my classroom, take a wad of snow, you know, and if I wanted the heater to come on, I'd stick it in the thermostat. Stuff, stuff doesn't work.
Don't do that.
Doesn't work, so don't do that. That, that doesn't work anymore. So we're much more in tune, our learning environments are much more consistent in temperature year round. And we also do have an alarm system, so we know if something crashes or if something gets too cold, and we know that all night. And this is an example, so talk about automation. You know, this is where Tony's department, you know, needs to work with us now, with our mechanical maintenance department, because IT is now tied to heating and cooling. And then in just new building designs, one of our new, new buildings that we have, Greeley West, Twain, and CTE Jefferson used in-floor radiant heat. You can see all the pink tubes down there on the right. And so it's, you know, we don't have these fans blowing in the classrooms anymore. So the air coming in, there's a lot more fresh air that comes into classrooms, but it doesn't have to be blown in. And we're using radiant heat from the floor. And then luckily, before, right before COVID hit, as COVID came in, everybody's worried about filtration. Filtration, in a lot of our filters in our buildings, we could run eights, MERV eight or nine, which is, has to do with like the hole in the filter and the size particles that let through. When we designed Greeley West, which is really the first one, we designed it to use MERV thirteens, which MERV thirteens will capture bacteria. It'll capture some particles that will carry viruses, not necessarily all viruses. So it's not like you're in a lab. But will, will take a lot of particles out of the air, way more than what our other systems have done. So we just went down that path, thought, well, we'll run MERV elevens, you know, in it. But just in case we ever need a thirteen, and then, oh, here comes COVID, and everybody wants thirteens, so we put thirteens in.
But it is worth noting that thirteens do use more energy than eights, because you have to use, push harder to get the air through.
Yeah, through the smaller particles.
But it's a small price to pay, I would say.
Yeah. And so, and then with these systems, we have increased ventilation, increased fresh air coming in the classrooms without the need for windows. And so I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Larson.
Okay. Data time. So just to kind of orient you to the graphs that we're going to be seeing, I just wanted to go through some, some vocabulary, some units. So if you're familiar, usually you would think about heat in this way, you don't often think about cooling. But today, we're going to think about both of them this way, so we can compare them apples to apples. So BTU is a British thermal unit. And we measure energy in America in million BTUs typically, or a thousand BTUs if you're looking at it per square foot. So when you see the MB2, that's million BTUs. You see a K in front of it, that's thousand BTUs, and that'll be a per square foot. KB2 per square foot is a unit of measurement to normalize, so that you can compare buildings of different size to each other and still get a similar metric. It's also known as EUI, or energy use intensity. So that might be a term that you've heard of if you've ever dug into the energy world. So starting out just with district-wide data, and we do, we are working with finance to get data previous to 2020. But we have all the data is, we have very good data input back through 2020. So we're trying to get a little earlier than that. But, you know, just, I think 2023 and 2024 will really show the impact of the bond. But to start, I mean, you can see, so electricity is shown in blue and gas is shown in green. So just right off the bat, we use a lot more gas in terms of MB2 than electricity, just because we live in a heating-driven climate. So we're using, so, you know, 2020, we were pretty high in the gas use. And you can just see, just for 2020 to 2021, there was a pretty big drop, which Greeley Central does play a role in, but we did a lot of boiler replacements and roof replacements from that time. And then also from 2021 to 2022, there's a slight drop in gas use. But then there's also an increase annually in electricity. I do think that we'll see that level off. Part of it is that we physically increased our square footage of the district. So that does play into part of it. The other part is that we've had a lot of construction activity, and construction activity uses a lot of electricity. So although some contractors are using generators, a lot of them are pulling off of our grid for construction activities. So, you know, my thought is that, and talking with our district engineers, that that's why we're seeing an increase in electricity. So 2023, 2024 will be very telling. Just to show you how we've increased our total square footage, this just shows 2020 all the way through 23. And so this doesn't account for modular classroom area, so this is just brick and mortar. So we've increased our brick and mortar from almost, from about 1.9 to almost 2.3 million square feet since the bond started. So that in itself is a kind of an impressive and exciting statistic.
So does anybody remember how many portable classrooms we've taken down? As to, I'll give you through December this year.
Sixty-five.
Yeah, you're pretty close. I think we'll, I think we'll be at, no, I think you're right, sixty-five to sixty-eight.
Yes.
Yeah, sixty-five, geez. I was going to give you like Lee West. So sixty-five out of one hundred and forty-two. So we'll be at fifty-eight percent of those portable classrooms we had before the bond. And we'll, we'll still have some more to attack before we're finished, so.
So this just shows energy use per, per year, per square foot. And I kept it in MB2 per square foot, you can move the decimal a couple of places, but just for comparison. So this is, and this, what's different about this from the first graph is that this does account for the increased square footage. So the first graph was just total energy. So this accounts for, really, it shows the same trends as the first graph did.
So if we've, if we've increased our square foot, our overall energy use has?
Has still increased even per square foot. So it's still the same trend. So again, attributing it to construction activity is really what I'm, what I'm thinking. And so then this is, this is where it gets kind of interesting. Although we've decreased our annual energy use year over year, our energy costs are increasing pretty substantially. So in 2020, we paid, we paid less than one and a half million for utility costs. And in 2022, we paid almost two and a half million. So it's a, an extremely, well, yeah, total, two and a half million. But, you know, and so, I mean, both electricity and natural gas have been increasing substantially. The, the theory is that electricity will kind of level out more, while natural gas will continue to be more and more volatile. So it'll be really, really cheap and then really, really expensive. Whereas electricity is assumed to be more level. So that's, but electricity is also a lot more expensive than natural gas. So if you go to the next one, this shows, this is the cost per square foot. So if you remember the beginning, where the natural gas use was so much higher, the actual use, now you look at the cost, so per square foot. So, you know, natural gas cost is significantly less than electricity, but we use a lot more natural gas. So it's just, it's just a lot to think about as we move towards different energy streams and different thoughts and new laws and things that. So now, we're going to dive into Greeley Central specifically. So built in nineteen twenty-seven, has had a myriad of additions, renovations. It's just under two hundred thousand square feet, and there's sixteen, sixteen hundred and thirty-five students enrolled this year. So some notable upgrades. We talked about the boiler replacement, which you'll really see the impact of. We did the HVAC controls in 2019, which did have a really big impact on Greeley Central as well, because it was kind of just running full bore all the time. The cooling tower and unit ventilators were replaced last year, and roof replacement, had a couple of them, with majority of it being replaced last year.
So one of the things, mainly to do with this, is we'd like to have building reports that we're creating. So this is an example of what a building report might look like, that we'd like to be able to give out to principals. Have a district in, have it broken down by building. So here's an example of Greeley Central.
So this is the same graph that you saw for the whole district, just for Greeley Central specifically. So now electricity is in blue, gas is in orange. So you can see 2020 to 2021, when we did that boiler replacement, it didn't quite get cut in half, but down by about sixty percent. So pretty significant change there. Again, the electric use also is on trend with the rest of the district going up. But we have had construction going on at Greeley Central since 2021.
Yeah, two years.
So. This shows the KB2 per square foot per year. So this would be how you would look at energy use, just if you were to compare it to other building types. Just some quick research online, the national average K-12 building, which, you know, that's a really wide range. It comes in right around fifty-eight. High schools are always higher than middle schools and elementary schools, just due to the nature of use. So honestly, for the age of Greeley Central, the type of systems we have, now that we're down to sixty-four, and I would expect to see an improvement on that next year when construction's over, you know, that, that actually is a very impressive number for a building that size. So I was very pleased to see these numbers with the boiler and roof improvements. This is total energy cost again. Electricity, much more expensive than natural gas, even though we use more natural gas. Still going up year over year.
Okay, so that kind of a conclusion, you know, our, I hope you can see our bond and MLO upgrades. We've made significant energy improvements in the district. We're not done, but we've done quite a bit of work. And then as you asked about, the, our dataset includes periods of partial occupancy to full occupancy. You know, we're running our buildings now more year round with summer school and everything, so we're able to track on that.
And so as I mentioned, electricity has gone up with added building area, also with construction. The natural gas has decreased despite adding building area. Both electric and gas are anticipated to continue to decrease. I would, you know, we're really close to being able to see the full results for 2023. And then even in 2024, I think it'll be pretty exciting to see how this all plays out. As Ken mentioned at the beginning, you know, upcoming energy priorities for the future, we're looking at window replacements, pretty wholesale, a lot of LED lighting conversions, and then eliminating portable classrooms, so.
Yeah, now I'll add that, one of the things we'll add to our next facility master plan is because solar has come up, you know how, and so we really would need to look at, have an engineering study done on our roofs. So we'll do that in our next facility master plan, where we have architects and engineers come in. And they look at, you know, can, can the roof support the weight of solar panels and the stresses because of, from wind for solar panels? Or, and we'll look at our site. But the, you know, thing to remember with solar energy is there's no such thing as a free lunch. We have a school pretty close to here that is, has solar panels on the roof, and they're going through a roof replacement, and it's costing three hundred thousand dollars to get those panels off the roof. Small school, off the roof, and then put them back on.
Not one of our schools.
No.
Yeah, nearby school.
Yeah. So, you know, I would say, boy, can you show three hundred thousand dollars' worth of savings in energy over a course of time to, you know, it's, so you gotta really look at, look at everything. But we'll do that, look at alternative sources of energy, what's feasible and what's not feasible. So we'll do that in our next study, which hopefully will be coming up in another year or two.
Well, it'll start next spring, but it'll be a year or two before we see the final work of that.
Yeah. Do you have any questions?
I had one. Do you guys know anything about Early College Academy? Because I was seeing on the chart, like, at the very beginning, you had all the high schools listed except for Early College Academy. Is that not like part of the bond?
Early College Academy, we are putting some bond money in, but we don't own that building. That building's owned by Ames. So I do know that those rooftop units on that building need to be replaced. And I believe Ames has that in their budget to do next year, if their budget's approved.
Yeah, we don't have energy data because we don't pay the toll bills. So we don't have that. There's some, there are a few buildings like that, that we just, we don't have the data for, so.
Ms. Rens, and maybe, can you share a little bit about what the bond did do at Early College Academy, or will do?
Will, will do, yeah. We're working on a, a storage room there, looking at some painting, carpet, and some door hardware for Early College, so.
Um, can you? Oh, I was just wondering, does it have a secure entrance?
Their entrance is secure, so we're, we're looking at that if we want to upgrade that at all, but they do have a buzz-in entrance there.
Um, can you give us an update on the solar field next to Prairie Heights Middle School? I'm just curious.
Yes, we've been, honestly, we've been wrestling with that a little bit, starting last summer, working with the owner of that. Getting data out of that for us to use has been very difficult. So we're trying to work with, and he's working with Excel and with the owner of that. For example, last year, we had weeds growing, you know, taller than the panel. And that's their job to keep those down. So we had quite a bit of conversation with them. And honestly, it's, it's been six months, excuse me, six months. And we're, we're still trying to mine data out of there that is useful for us to see how effective that solar field is.
I've talked to almost every division of Excel Energy, trying to get, because when it was installed, they had, it metered separately, and they had to do kind of like a hand calculation to figure out how much we were producing. And so it's just at the beginning of 2023, they put in a single meter that tracks production, energy use. So we have data for this year, and that's really all we have right now. I think I'm getting close to getting more, so we should have more information.
So we don't own that solar field. A vendor, an outside vendor owns that solar field, and it has actually changed ownership in the time that we've been involved, hasn't it?
I'm not sure of that.
It's pretty common for solar.
It may have.
What would the main contact person say?
And so it's, it's a really, been a complex project.
Yeah, so the energy, you know, the assumption is, is that the energy goes to Prairie Heights. It really, I believe, just goes into the grid, you know. And so what kind of kickbacks are we seeing from that, producing energy that goes into the grid? So we're working on, we're working on that.
Because that land is ours, though, right?
Because that land is ours, though, right?
We have a lease agreement. We're about halfway through twenty-year lease agreement.
Going forward, I know a lot of that got read due to lack of funds and we've talked about that, like going forward, try to keep within the, the lifetime of the, whatever the part might be. We, we have that in the budget to, to set aside maintenance things going forward now that we're, we have a higher revenue so that we don't have to ask for bond every time we need a roof replaced and stuff.
Yeah, so you know, boilers are what fifteen to twenty years, roofs are about twenty years. When we do a roof, we put thirty-year details into our roof so that there, there's thirty and make sure we can get the twenty out of them. So the other thing that is a goal of ours this year is all that data, that spreadsheet's a lot longer, is that we have all that data into software that we'll be able to then kick up, okay, what, what are our maintenance needs in twenty twenty-eight, twenty thirty? What is coming up and then what will our budget need for that? So we can plan ahead to make sure, yeah, we don't end up with a spreadsheet that's all ready.
Yeah, I guess maybe it's more for Megan, but I was just meaning more like in a perfect world, you'd have a, basically a cash account that matched your depreciation as you went forward. And even in my world, I can't ever do that hardly ever. So you end up getting a loan or a bond, right, or whatever you need to do. But going forward, we're trying to address that more appropriately.
Well, the large capital expenditures will always require a bond issue. We do have, because of the mill levy override, we do have some of that, that thing that we had called deferred maintenance will now not be deferred. It'll be maintenance that's ongoing that we're able to take care of. But the big items will always require a bond, typically require a bond issue or spending in the reserves.
Yeah, understand that part. I was just thinking why we have this green period of not having to spend money that we've just regret, we should be saving for the next time it goes out or something.
Yeah, and we're just, and you know, we, we've, we had to catch up and now we're in so much better of a space that we can actually use dollars that have been set aside in the past that were capital projects. When we didn't have money to give raises, for example, we had to pull out of capital projects. And now because of our mill levy override and, and the generosity of our voters with the bond and the mill, we've really been able to catch up and hopefully can stay caught up. Knowing big things, big, big roof replacements, big, you know, window replacements of an entire building, those kind of things would, would be a bond issue. But over time, then you can repair windows because you have that, those capital project dollars to do that. Or a gym floor. You wouldn't necessarily need a bond to do a gym floor over time.
I would just like to give a shout out to some people in my department who have managed a lot of this work on their own, which, you know, coming from other districts, from industry, it's actually fairly unusual for districts to take on this level of work on their own. And it, and how it's been managed is very impressive before I came on board. So, you know, our department has really taken this bond on and just really done everything they can with it. So it's, I think that's pretty exciting.
Well, I would commend your department and Ken, you know, the rest of your team as well, that one of the things that they've done so well, and because we haven't had a lot of turnover at the, the manager and director level, is they've been able to, to utilize their budget, the mill levy override dollars, bond dollars, grant dollars sometimes, because sometimes there's best grant dollars involved, and really get the most out of our dollars that we have because they're so well thought out and so organized in their work. And, and that's why you're seeing what you're seeing, Mandy, and I appreciate you saying it. It's absolutely true of this crew that we have. And the folks in finance helping us to, to piece it all together.
Are you any questions?
Ms. Pappas, it's your, you know, your last work session to hear an item from Facility Services.
Yes, it is. I do really appreciate it. And as I was looking at your spreadsheet with, when you first came to us with that spreadsheet, I think you were pretty proud of that spreadsheet at the time. And we were too, because it gave us that visual to see what dire need we were in. And as you mentioned with the bond, I just think back to how happy we were when that bond passed so we could do so much in our district to make things better, so. And being a former building principal, just every year, just waiting to see how much money you got for capital improvements that it might be nothing. So, yeah, it is, it is great. Thank you very much for the update.
I like that at the first spreadsheet, Prairie Heights is the only one in green, and now Prairie Heights is one of the only ones in orange, because it's now the old building, which is kind of funny, but yeah.
Well, thank you, guys. Thank you both for that presentation. I appreciate it. I do thank your, your departments. That has, that has been a lot to manage for both you guys and for them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
We appreciate it greatly. Next on our agenda is our calendar committee update and next steps. Phil, again, I'll give it to you to introduce.
Thank you, President Matthews. And I think that Erin Snyder and Christina Crane are coming to set up and share some information. And I'll just get started while they're getting set up and share with you that, as you know, annually, we have a calendar committee that is made up of, of teachers, classified staff, building administrators, parents, who, who study our current calendar and consider other calendar options. And then we typically bring you an actual proposal for the calendar in February or so for your approval. I've asked the calendar committee to come a little earlier this year, just to begin some discussion around a couple of options. And then they'll share with you still some work that we're doing and conversations that we're still having around calendar and give you an opportunity to ask some questions tonight and, and give some feedback. We won't be making a decision, maybe we could in as early as February if we bring in two for First Street in January perhaps, and maybe get the information out. I know, I know our staff and families, this is not, they would like to know the calendar yesterday. I mean, we are already, as far as they're concerned, we're already behind on making this decision as they're making their plans for summer and spring break next year and things like that. So with that, Ms. Crane, Director of Human Resources, and Ms. Snyder, our President of our Greeley Education Association, co-chair this calendar committee.
Well, thank you all. We do have, we're going to bring kind of two and a half options to you tonight to consider. These really are still concepts. They are very much drafts. They're very much able to be changed if there's feedback that we get. Nothing is set in stone at this point in time, but these are after doing some research and coming together as a team and getting a little bit of early feedback, both from our cabinet leadership team and the Greeley Education Association Board, Executive Board. We have these two, or two concepts, like I said, to, to show you. So this first option is going to look very familiar. Erin's going to speak a little bit more about this, but this is going to look very similar to the calendar that we have had in years past, which is why I picked this one. So basically you can see that our quarter days are very similar. There's a little bit more in the fourth quarter because that's our big testing time. Student contact is the same. The rollout for the first day for students, all of that is listed. January start date is January sixth for all students return. Last day of school is May twenty-second. All of this is very similar to what we've experienced in the recent time. These educator contract days are almost exactly the same in August as they were this year. And then the January start date is going to be a little bit of a struggle, but it's less of a struggle than the other options that we have, just because of the way the dates actually fall on the calendar. And winter break, we tried really hard to get three weekends in there, but I think that didn't actually happen. So that's where we're at for that. Wait till you see it, you're going to be so excited about it.
So this is the visual of the calendar. It does look very similar to the calendar that we've had this year. Our educators come back, our new educators come back August first for those new professional academy days. Our returning educators start on the seventh, a week before our students who return on the fourteenth. And we do have that start for our older students on the fourteenth, and then preschool and kindergarten will come back the following Monday, the nineteenth. We have shifted just slightly our parent teacher conference days, so they've shifted a little bit earlier into September in this calendar, based on some recommendations from our educators, that that feedback be given to families earlier on in the, in the semester. We do maintain the four-day weekend, the long weekend in October for that break for both staff and students in October, and then have a full week at Thanksgiving. We do have, we have a solid two weeks in December and January for winter break, but they do go Friday to Friday in this case, based on the way the days fall. Our staff will return on January third, on Friday, January third, for their professional development day at the beginning of second semester. And then students will begin on Monday, the sixth. Erin talked about the alternatives to that. We had talked about taking out the four-day weekend, either in October or April, to take one of those days. We had talked about having staff come back on the twenty-third, of Monday, the twenty-third of December, which we didn't think was really a good option, didn't think too many people would be, would be open to that. And so kind of the less, least of the three evils that we looked at. I guess the fourth one was having staff come back the Tuesday after Memorial Day for one work day. So those were the four options we considered. And of those, we thought that the Friday, or Friday, January third option would be the least painful of what, of what we found. We do still have parent teacher conferences then in February with a few holidays sprinkled throughout. Our spring break in March aligns with UNC and Ames Community College. And then again, we have the four-day weekend in April and we finish school before Memorial Day in this. And then graduation would be Memorial Day weekend. Kind of a quick rundown of what that looks like. Any questions at this point in time on the calendar? As you will see in our other proposals, we do have limitations and benefits for each of these calendars. And some of these we do have, you'll see, is supported by research here. So if you were to click on this link, it would take you to the article that talks about the potential loss of learning over the summer months when students are not in school. So that will occur, or that could occur with this calendar, with June and July both being off. Having school mostly five days a week throughout the school year means that any personal appointments for staff or students have to require time off, time away from school. And we do have a note on here that currently on the calendar, September thirtieth, is listed as a professional development day, which could potentially impact the October count window that begins on the first of October, that next day. There are some benefits, though, to this calendar. It is consistent, like we said. There also are very few CHESA conflicts because it's something we've been working with over many years. Our new educators begin on August first, meaning they don't start in July, which saves us a good chunk of money in benefits. And it does maintain the forty weekends in October and April so that we have that refresh time, both for our students and our staff. And we do know that this is something we have strived to do over many years. We begin second semester after winter break, we end first semester before winter break, and that is supported by research as well. Fourth quarter is a little bit longer to accommodate for testing, like Erin mentioned. And even though there are some limitations to a longer summer, there are benefits to it as well. It does provide the opportunity for both our students and our staff to take courses over the summer that would align with colleges and universities. It allows for summer employment for students and staff and internships, again, for students and staff. So lots of opportunities during that window of time. Any questions about our option one?
Can you just remind me what that acronym stood for, the CHSAA?
Oh, CHESA, I apologize. CHESA is the Colorado High School Activities and Athletics Association.
Got it. Thanks. I thought I got all the acronyms.
So calendar option two is basically, at a glance, it is very similar to option one, but it includes a fall break in October. So there is a full week-long break in October. We still worked very hard to balance the quarter days, so you'll see a fairly easy, a fairly good balance there in our quarter days, again, with fourth quarter being a little bit longer intentionally. Our student contact days are the same, our educator contract days are the same, and our winter break is very similar in this case. Now, we do have, like I said, we have two options here to show you. They both include that fall break in October. Two A basically brings us back a week earlier to accommodate for those days. Two B ends us a week later to accommodate for those days. So in this instance, we would start a few days earlier. Students would start on the eighth of August instead of the fourteenth, which was in the first option. And our staff begin a few days earlier as well. So our new educators would begin on July twenty-fifth, and our returning teachers would come back on August first in order to accommodate this earlier start. This is what that calendar looks like. Again, you can see in July, for the first time in a while, we presented you with a calendar that has some July dates marked out. Those are the new educator days there in July. Our new teacher, our returning teachers would come back August first. Students would start on the eighth, Thursday, the eighth. And then again, we have that professional development day on September thirtieth. Now here you can see the week-long break in October for students and staff there, the fourteenth through the eighteenth. The rest of this calendar is going to look very similar to calendar option one. After that October day, these are very consistent from here on out. So you'll still see the week in November for Thanksgiving, a very similar winter break. In this case, though, educators come back on the sixth and students don't start until the seventh. So they do get that full two weeks with three weekends break in this calendar. February is very similar. The professional development day is moved slightly. March, you have spring break as well, four-day weekend in April, and our students are done the week before Memorial Day and staff finish that Friday as well. So graduations again would be the weekend of Memorial Day weekend in this instance. Now, in the second option, we keep the start date very similar to option number one, but we extend the end date on this calendar. So our last day of school will actually be May twenty-ninth after Memorial Day weekend in this case. So looking at the calendar, it does require our new educators to begin that last day of July to get all of the staff, or staff contract days in, in this calendar. But again, very similar, you'll see that week-long break in October, our traditional breaks in November, December, January. And then to make up for that week in October, the end of school is extended in May after Memorial Day. So we still finish in May. We wouldn't go into June in this option. We still finish in May, but it could potentially in future years, if we were to adopt this, be a, a June end.
When is graduation?
Graduation would still be the weekend of Memorial Day, and then it would just be underclassmen and younger students that came back for that last week. So again, the basics of this calendar, there's a week off in October. In November, two weeks for winter break, which split December and January. We have a week in March for spring break and still maintain that long weekend in April. So there are more longer breaks spread throughout the year, both for staff and students in this case. We do have the option of either coming that week earlier or staying the week later to accommodate for that time. And then there was one other shift in this, the second semester parent teacher conference day, typically we have those on Mondays. In this case, this committee recommended that we try doing it on a Friday to see if that is something that will work well for students and families and staff. It can be difficult, I'm sure Erin could speak more to this, but it can be difficult for our staff members to stay late Monday into the evening on Monday and then come back and teach a full week. And so this would move that evening requirement for staff members to a Friday, so they would have that recovery time over the weekend. Again, some limitations and benefits. The similar, it's a similar timeframe, there's just that one week difference, so it's still a very extended summer, so you have limitations and benefits to that. In this instance, educators, in, in both proposals, educators begin in July, which would increase the benefit cost for the district. Now there is, childcare would be needed for families during that week in October, the additional time that we would add to the calendar in October. Same thing, that September thirtieth professional development day could impact October count. And again, all personal appointments during the week would require time off of school or work for students or staff. There is a slightly shortened summer, so that could potentially slightly increase the learning loss there as a benefit, although there are still opportunities for coursework and employment, internships over the summer. Again, Again, very few conflicts with athletics and activities. But it does increase the number of extended breaks throughout the year, which helps both our staff and our students and families. And it's possible, with the earlier start, it would allow some additional pay for, not, not more pay, but shifted pay for our classified staff. They might have a, a more balanced pay throughout the year based on coming back a little bit earlier in July during that pay period. We know that there's a lot of research around flexible work environments and how important that is for employees, especially educators, who have cited those, those needs. Workload and work-life balance are reasons that they have left the profession. And they have, also, there's research that shows that educators prefer the, the break, broken-up nature of a calendar like this. There's less, there are smaller chunks to plan for with the breaks in between. And so that may make it easier for them, instead of planning for a full semester. And the other benefit to this is that there is some time that families could travel, that's not necessarily during that peak summer season. So it may, may be less expensive for families to do that in October. There are some slides here with some of that research that I mentioned that's linked there at the end, but we are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Have you guys gotten feedback on the long weekend that we just had in the fall from, you know, teachers?
Just anecdotal, informal at this point in time, but people were really excited about it, and I think they really enjoyed it. I think it's been positive. It has been positive.
I feel like the students at the Council of Student Reps thought it was great. Right?
Yeah. I definitely thought so, just because it was, we were in school for like, three months already, and it was just like, I was personally getting burnt out, and I needed just like, a good recovery day. And I work as well, so I know for those upperclassmen that do work, they just need kind of two days at least to just not do anything, not open the computer or anything, and just relax. So I think it was beneficial for the fall break, so.
Would you like three extra days to the fall break?
Yes. I'm not gonna be here, but I know my sisters would like it, so. But I think it would be a good.
Even if you had to start earlier? Or go later?
I personally would like to go earlier, and to like, come into school earlier. So like, I think it was August 8th that we would come in. And it's not really much of a difference, just because I remember when I was younger, we, it was kind of similar. To those days, it was like, the 8th, or the 10th, or the 12th. So it wouldn't be too much of a difference for me, anyway, but.
So with 2A and 2B, option 2A was the August 8th start time versus 2B, August 14th. And then you guys said something about the winter break. It like, it, you were able to get more weekends in which of those two options?
2A and 2B both have the full two-week winter break with weekends on either side. So we could, if we wanted to with that option 1, if we were to start students that day earlier, we could do that. But it then pushes us into July with staff, which has that benefit cost. So we're a little tied in on that end. And then we're kind of bookend on the end of the school year as well with Memorial Day. The likelihood that staff are gonna come back that Tuesday after Memorial Day for a workday. I mean, if that was how the calendar was built, I'm sure staff would do it. How much they would like that, I think, is, is more the question, yeah. And so, we're limited there.
The whole week after Memorial Day, is that gonna be? Do you have an idea how educators would feel about that?
Erin could probably speak more to that. Having one day to come back after Memorial Day, or the full week, like in calendar 2B.
Can you flip into that, so I can look at it again?
Yeah, sure. And I'll just add that, right around here, many of the schools let out before Memorial Day, but in the Denver metro area, I mean, you started even a little bit south of us, many of those districts go, come back that week after Memorial Day.
And we used to as well. Like, that was, I think that we did that.
It almost always rains that entire week, so I'm like, we're not gonna be at the pool.
Yeah, I just, the, will you remind me what your name is?
Natalie.
So Natalie's comment about coming back earlier rather than going later, I think on the teacher perspective of it, as far as like recess and being outside, and like, actually like, enjoying your time, when we come back earlier, it's still super hot out. And like, that's, it, it's really hard. So like, I would say that we would rather stay later than come back earlier, just for the sake of like, actually heat. Enjoying our outside time when we do get a minute to be outside, because it's, it's not much of a relief when it's just so hot when we come back.
Do we, do we have a sense of which of these three, 1, 2A, or 2B, teachers?
We do not. We have not surveyed staff this year.
This is just the Calendar Committee.
This, the Calendar Committee just started, and we wanted to come out to you all tonight. We'll go to the District Accountability Committee tomorrow night. Teachers Advisory Council here in a couple of weeks, and then probably get 2A staff, either some kind of focus groups or survey or something. The hard thing about a survey is, I mean, that you see how many nuances there are around all of this, and getting people all the information so they can respond is really hard. But we, we do plan to do some focus groups. The other thing that the committee was looking at was the four-day school week. And what was apparent, once, I, I met with them last week, and, well, most cabinet met with them, was that we just have a lot more work to do on that four-day week before it could actually be a viable consideration for District 6. So for example, you know, what are really the implications on classified staff? And, and, you know, because most four-day weeks would not move to just four 10-hour days. And so, it would be very difficult for our classified employees to get all of their hours during the week. Other options are just around instructional minutes, and, you know, how that day would look, how many minutes would you have in a day? How many days would you extend the school year? You may recall that we did bring, or did look at a schedule last year of a four-day week that kept the school day exactly the same length as it is now, but spread that out further throughout the year. And, and that was not popular at all with families or with, with staff. They weren't really looking for a longer school year. So, you know, as more and more districts look at a four-day week, I think it's prudent for us to look at it. So we've begun that work, and I think it'll probably push into the negotiations work, most likely. So there will not be a four-day week next school year. We can confidently say that. But I think one of the, either any of these three options, or some version of these could be a possibility. Do you think there's some, there's some more room around moving days around? I wrote down some questions and ideas that I have, that I wondered that might even tune these up just a little bit more. So just know, this is really first draft, coming out of the Calendar Committee. They've only had a couple of meetings to work on these.
And I have AR meeting tomorrow night, so I'll share with the ARs as well.
You will, good, that's great.
And then we are in contact with Mr. Allen, who runs the, or who works with the Council of Student Representatives to get on their agenda, too. So we'll have student, parent, and staff feedback. We'll also meet with the Classified Council once we have a more solid proposal to move forward, so that we can gather actual feed, feedback on the data.
You know, one of the things we've heard from classified, as you know, is that those, those months where they have a week off, like November and December and January, they, they don't get a full paycheck, because they, they don't work a full four weeks in, in those months. So this calendar actually throws that into October also, that October, November, December, and January would not have full months of pay. And then March, again. However, at least on, on some of these options, or one of these options, they might be coming back earlier and have additional pay there in July, and certainly benefits if they start in July. The way benefits work is the month that you start is the month we need to pay benefits. So even if you start on the last day of July, we provide an additional, that next month of benefits, Megan?
August, yes.
Is it, yeah, so then they're, they would get benefits in August. Where now, if you start in August, you're not fully benefit till September.
So both 2A and 2B cost an additional $200,000?
As they stand now.
Not 2B, 2A.
2B would as well, because new administrators come back the 31st.
They would.
Just that one day.
What was the length of the four quarters between each of the plans? That fourth quarter just seemed really long on the last one.
Yeah, let me pull those numbers up. So in the first option, the fourth quarter is a little bit longer, so 40, 42, 42, and 46. And that's gonna be the option that's most similar to what we have now. In 2A, it's 40, 43, 40, and 47. So still fairly balanced there with the fourth quarter being longer. And then that third option is 40, 39, and that's where that bigger difference is there in second quarter, and then 40 and 51.
And remember, our state testing is in that fourth quarter. So we lose instructional days there, and AP testing days, and AP, IB. AP and IB, and all of our state assessments.
Thank you. I was trying to make sense to the way that last one was so long.
Yeah, and so some of that is that balance of quarter 2.
Okay.
Is there any concern about our AP and IB testing? It seems like with maybe 2B, you lose days before those tests, and they're added on in May. Were you worried about that at all?
There would be a few days. I don't know that it would be enough that it would impact.
I think what's, what you will hear the die-hard Advanced Placement International Baccalaureate teachers say is, you've just taken five days of instruction out of October that I have used to get kids, students ready for AP and IB exams. And, and adding that week at the end of May does not give it to them for instructional time for AP and IB.
Yeah, they're losing, they're losing days before those exams.
Yep, they are.
But keep in mind, too, that the courses that they're losing are typically gonna be then that first semester course, and they're not testing until second semester.
Yeah, but they're year-long courses.
Some, yeah.
Most are, most of those are. And, and we know, too, that there's never enough time. There's never enough time.
How do we feel about the financial impact of $200,000? Is that sustainable, feasible?
Yes, you know, it's, they're real dollars, but that's just a little over 2 FTE, if you kind of think about, that's kind of how we think, Megan and I, is, all right, how many FTE are we talking about here? So it's relatively a very small part of our very large, you know, multi, multimillion-dollar budget.
And if it's going to result in teacher retention and job satisfaction?
Right, because they, that, they're, they're feeling more balanced, more rested. Kids are more balanced, more rested, having had a week off in October. I think, you know, there's some trade-offs there that are probably palatable.
Yeah, the data suggests that replacing employees can cost anywhere from a third to over half of their annual salary. So if we were to save.
Last thing I saw was $50,000 on a teacher, to replace a teacher, was at least a $50,000 expenditure.
Yeah.
It was the, the research.
So if we can save for teachers.
Right.
There you go.
And when is it this is gonna get presented to the teachers and staff?
Teachers, there's an association.
I have an AR meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
Parents is also tomorrow, District Accountability tomorrow. And we do have, there's a Teachers Advisory Council meeting. I think it's the first media, first Monday or Tuesday in December.
Monday in December.
Monday in December. The first Wednesday in December would be Classified Council. And I don't know the date of the Council of Student Reps meeting yet, but we're on the radar for it.
You may have mentioned this already, but who's on your, I mean, do you have a diverse group on your Calendar Committee?
We do. We have a great group on our Calendar Committee. We have a handful of teachers, a handful of administrators that represent elementary, middle school, K8s, and high schools in each of those areas. Jill, thank you for attending. Jill is our elementary administrator that serves on the committee, so she's here tonight. And she did a lot of work on that, the bulk of the work, with her team on the 2A and 2B calendar options. We also have classified staff on our Calendar Committee, representation from Nutrition Services, and Sasha Kahoon, who is our Classified Council President, serves on the committee. We have, we have two parents. We also have Transportation. Chad Holly from Transportation serves on the committee as well. And two parents from District Accountability Committee that serve, and there's someone I'm missing. Oh, Chris Klein.
Athletics, yeah.
Our District Athletic Director. So we have kind of all of those pieces, all the age ranges, all of the, all of the employee groups represented, to try and, try and get as much diverse feedback as we can on that committee. And then at this last meeting, like Dr. Pilch mentioned, we had Cabinet come to hear and provide feedback, as well as the GEA Executive Board, and Kim Moore, our District Registrar, who works on the October count and instructional minutes piece. So trying to make sure that we think of all the things and account for them, while we know that everyone has very strong opinions on the calendar, and it would be impossible to make everyone 100% happy. We're trying to do as much as we can to, to consider all of the people who will be impacted.
Thank you.
Any other questions, guys? All right, I'll say thank you for being here. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for all the work of the Calendar Committee.
Great job. Thank you, ladies.
We're now to our debrief of the work session. And so, can I pose a question? Why don't you go first?
So just wanted to thank everyone who presented. Mandy Larson and Kent Henson, thank you for all your work on making sure we're being as energy-efficient as possible. And it's exciting to see the graphs every time, and see how much progress we've made with the dollars that voters have let us be responsible with. And calendar review, it's so nuanced. There's such small little details, but they can mean so much. Even, even the Parent-Teacher Conference, whether you're gonna do them on Fridays or on Mondays, all that thought that goes into those details is very appreciated. And I'm eager to hear from all the different stakeholder groups that you guys are meeting with, and hear what their opinions on, on the options. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Bentley?
Yeah, same, the same, same. The, it's always nice to see where we were and where we're, where we're at, but just would like to reiterate, I want to make sure we're staying focused on where we're gonna be in, you know, five, 10, 15 years. So we have the, we're not just doing this up and down of repairs or costs or spending within reason, you know. The calendar's also something that we spend a lot of time on, it seems like. And we'll talk about it a lot more before we make any decisions, but the, it seems like the world's kind of trying to go to four-day weeks around us, you know? And I worry that that won't work for D6 with our demographic and the parents that we have and stuff. I know that personally, I'm on a four-day week at university, and it creates me a lot of issues as a working parent. We're a working, single parent, trying to get kids to practices and events on that day off, you know? I have premature teenage boys, but I still, I still really like them sitting home alone. And it's a, a day less of food for those kids that need it. So lots to think about, and I, on that end, I, if we ever did go to a, a four-day week, I would want some listening sessions and a lot more input before we, I would feel comfortable making a decision like that. I, I, there was a poll that went out to university parents, and I'm, I'm pretty involved, and I even missed that one. I didn't get to vote on that one. So it was a landslide, they said, on, on that way. But I don't know if university is equally represented as, as far as the district. So lots of things to think about and take into consideration.
Thank you. Ms. Mash?
Yeah, I'll just reiterate everything that was said. Thank you for the detailed presentation. I just continue to be amazed at how far bond dollars have gone, and how they've touched every school. And I think we do have a wide group in the community who are interested in our ecological stewardship as well with our, with our building. So it's great to know that. Yeah, our efficiency has increased so much, and looking forward to seeing how that all shakes out when we're kind of to our new equilibrium. And Kylie really mentioned all the things that I also am concerned about for a four-day week. So I, I'm excited about these. I definitely have my favorite, but that's just my personal, personal way that that would work out for me. So yeah, I'm very interested to hear what our teachers and other parents, and of course, our students. My kids were sick over fall break, so they got rest, but it wasn't very much fun. So they might have appreciated three days in bed, and then three days to do something fun, so. But yeah, that, that, I appreciate how well thought out, how detail-oriented it is. So thank you for that.
Ms. Solomon?
So I apologize for the late question, but I, I was just thinking, what about ABC daycares and the onsite daycares for those week-long breaks? Are they also gonna be included in the representation of feedback?
Yeah, we'll work with our partners, ABC and Boys and Girls Club, if there is a schedule that looks like we might have a significant movement of children into the community, more than what we have now. So we did, we actually brainstormed the organizations last week that we need to bring to the table.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you for that presentation and I guess coming to you as a former teacher, four-day work weeks do look fantastic, because it gives you that one day where you can just focus on lesson planning and grading and whatnot, but it is a, an inconvenience for the parents who have to work and have to come up with the daycare issues and whatnot for that extra day off. And I think it does affect the learning abilities of the kids, because they think shorter days, but going throughout the whole week is more beneficial. But thank you for all the time you guys put into those and thank you for answering all my questions with the energy end of things. So good information, a lot to think about tonight.
Ms. Betts?
Yes, the same. I appreciate the updates tonight. I have been interested in the energy and I've talked to Kent about that a couple of times. And of course, the calendar is always important information to bring. I, I really appreciate the thoughtfulness about that and I'm not sure that people realize, I think Brenda said it, but I just don't think people realize how much goes into creating a calendar. And hopefully, I think what was really beneficial was having a two-year calendar, so hopefully that might happen again. And then I just would like to also say, I wouldn't, I, I won't have a say in this, but I would not support a four-day work week either, just because of our families, as Kyle mentioned, so. Thanks, it was a great, great work session. And it is my last work session. Thanks for bringing that to my attention. Yes, yes.
Any last jobs before you go?
No, I, I feel like kindness is the word today. It's kindness day or something, so.
No jobs.
Yeah, kindness.
Okay, I'll be nice.
Yeah.
I don't have anything to add, just echo those thanks to everybody for their, their time on Calendar Committee and our facilities team. And Natalie, did you have any closing remarks on the work session?
Um, I don't know, I think I'm always just amazed at the end of the work session, because I probably wouldn't even have thought of like everything that just facilities does for the district, for our buildings and stuff like that. And then obviously, like the calendar community, I, I just, I get the calendar at the end of the school year and I'm like, oh, this is the calendar, so. But I didn't really think of the thought process and the actual care that they put into it, so I'm always amazed by the end of this, so.
Thank you, Natalie. Dr. Pilch?
Good, thank you.
All right. Our work session is adjourned. We'll see everyone back at six o'clock for a business meeting.